Main Street Manager for the Regent.
Right, but you all said, okay. Okay, well, we will start the meeting with the approval of the minutes from the August meeting. Did anybody have any additions or corrections to make? I mean, have you motioned to accept it? I made a motion to accept.
Sorry, did you say that childcare facility is not happening now? Okay. And that's right on its own place? Okay. Sorry. Second to that.
Okay, our new president today is case number... Hi, sorry.
We don't need everyone. I know, that's why I forgot about you.
That's my favorite panel meeting.
First, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Town Administrator, Janine Harrington, and also our new Main Street Manager, Jennifer Bynum. We also have a new treasurer, Sharon Strand. She's not here in work today, but she's in one of the new offices up here, so we're really happy to have all of them.
So we actually go back to the September Town Council meeting. And at that meeting, we heard about the Middle Passage Ceremonies and Port Markers Project, which is a group that we are working with that are discussing the possibility of placing a marker at Leonard Town Wharf to honor the 2 million captive Africans that perished during the transatlantic crossing. It's known as the Middle Passage Project. And Sotterley was one of the first ones, and they got their marker in 2012. There are some recent discoveries about the history of the wharf. And so they would like to place a marker there. So we've been working with them for a year or so. That looks like it's moving forward. We also awarded the bid for our new water tower at Meadows at Town Round Two, which is on the donated land at the back of the Meadows to our development, to landmark. And they are getting ready to get started anytime now. And the low bid was $6,899,000, which is, of course, was much more than we expected. But today's environment. We also did a significant project and grant update as well. Grant-wise, we've been submitting a lot of grant applications. We recently purchased the lot down at the Wharf for the seminar. We can behind that last house on the left. We submitted a $250,000 maybe legacy grant to for the construction of that parking lot. We also are on our fifth round right now of facade grants. And we applied for additional money. We've been getting $50,000 a year in rebranding it to the local businesses. And this year, we've applied for $100,000. So we're looking at maybe doing some bigger projects. We've had probably 40 small projects over the last five years with those facade grants. And it's really made a difference in the downtown. We also received a public art master plan grant for $18,000 just recently. We're gonna really look at trying to get a plan for what public art. We have a lot of people asking for murals and such. But we want to make sure that it kind of all works together when we actually plan out what we want to do. We also received the Project Restore Grant. I think we talked about it at a previous meeting for $266,800. And that went to Botanic. And then Jim Miles purchased the building, Old David Flowers Building on Fenwick Street. So those two received the Project Restore Grant. We also submitted a $400,000 community parks and playground grant to upgrade the wharf parking lot that's existing and try to add a turnaround there for larger vehicles. We also have been working on the comprehensive plan, which is needs to be updated every 10 years. Our last plan was in 2010. And Doug and Sean are on that committee. That will be coming forward. We had a couple of meetings last month. One was a public meeting, just to kind of explain what the comp plan is and what we're updating. And we'll be having a public hearing before you all, probably in January. And you make a recommendation to Town Council in February is what our goal is. We've been working furiously on it. We have a meeting this week with the committee, trying to wrap it up and get it sent over to the state by the end of this month because they have a 60-day review period. And it really looks at a lot of different elements. And one of them important is where we want to grow and for the outside and within town. I have a lot of annexations that are people reaching out to us. I'm trying to put a stop to those right now until we finish the update on the comp plan to make sure where we really want to grow and what types of growth we want to see. So that is an important project that we're working on. And you will be seeing that shortly for a public hearing. But you're welcome to come to any of the other meetings that we have with the public meetings. And then our October meeting, we just had a couple of liquor license letters of support for Botanic Cafe and T and J's Co., which is a new restaurant that is hopefully coming to the old Slice House on Lorette Avenue, Seafood and Steak Restaurant. We also extended our waters to a maintenance contract, the whole of landscaping. And we extended our elevator contract for this building. And then just last month, just in the November meeting, November 12, we had a public hearing on ordinance number 225, which is an increase of our water impact fee from $3,000 to $6,000. These fees are paid for cost of any growth-related project. I just talked about the water tower and how expensive that was. And we also have to drill a new well. So these fees are collected to pay for that growth so that the existing residents don't have to pay for growth-related projects. And that did pass and will be effective on December 2nd. And if there's no nothing that comes out against that. And ordinance number 226 also passed, which is revealing the admissions and amusement tax that the town has been collecting. We instituted that tax in 1972. And it's not a required tax. It's for any business that collects admission or has amusements. And that definition has changed over the years so much. And the state definition is very outdated. There's a lot of confusion about what businesses need to pay and what businesses don't. We already waived it in the downtown for Arts and Entertainment District. It's one of the benefits of being Arts and Entertainment District. So most of our admissions and amusement tax is already being waived in the downtown. It's a very small, the most we've ever collected is like $200 back in FY '23. So it's not worth the aggravation and people just not understanding who's supposed to pay it and who's not. So we're just abolishing that at this time. You can always readjust it if there's a different need in the future. And we also issued a contract for an architect to redesign the food hall that we got a proposal on at the Leonard Town Wharf. In early 2024, we had put out an RFI to build a food hall at the Wharf. We only received one proposal, but we're still working with that person. They had originally designed a three-story, 18,640-square-foot building. The estimates for the construction of that were just so much that it really wasn't economically feasible. So we've met with some consultants that build and run food halls across the country. We made some design changes to add some public space and some addition we used and cut the food hallway back. And so it's just going to go to the architect. The council approved them to redo the drawings with this new configuration. And then we'll bring it forward for public review and see if they're able to proceed.
I have a question. Is that still a weekly story?
No, we actually, the third story was just a small section, more like a daffel top, really. It was really a vet space on the second floor. And the first floor was the food hall. So we've cut down, we've cut off that top decky section in this frame.
That was going on the left-hand side.
Yes, where the concrete is, where the concrete pad is still there. But I think it's probably going to be more to two stories.
Is the town paying for it by that?
No, so we put out the RFI. We own the land. And the proposal was either a long-term lease on the land or purchase of the land. But we would not be able to sell it. We could do like a 50-year lease or something like that. We had a number of people came that were interested in it. But we ended up just getting the one proposal. So it just hasn't gone through the process yet because the committee that's working on it, it really just wasn't feasible how it was proposed for the group to be able to fund it. So hopefully, it was a smaller building. And it really was too many vendors anyway. They had like 14 vendors shown. And the consultants are saying more like six or seven vendors is all you would really want in a food hall down there. So hopefully, this will, this will work. We'll get some favorable numbers. And it will be something that the private sector can build.
Would this be for rent or is it a real estate?
Well, they can rotate that. It's kind of like Shepherd's Old Field does, where they have different vendor spaces and they can come and go. You know, it could be local restaurants want to do something down at the Wharf temporarily. There's a number of different options. They're all over the country now. It's very, very popular.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, follow-up question on that. Is that any plans that we see for that? Is that going to be in conjunction with like resurface parking area or?
So that's in the critical area. We can't pave the parking area. I know that was an election comment that, you know, why haven't we paved that? It's because we can't pave the parking down there. But we are going to try to resurface like something down there. We may do a previous paver or something like that. And then the new parking lot will probably definitely be a previous paver, I would imagine.
Any other questions?
May I?
Then we'll go to new business, which is case number 03H34. Evidence storage building.
Yes, may I? So this property is located just north of the existing county or the Sheriff's Department and to the east of the state. And the old, what I call, home office. With their request of concept approval for a site development plan for a two-phase project. Phase one being that evidence storage facility, which is 20,611 square foot. And the second phase would be the 20, or actually, it's 52,521 square foot. The consultant is KCI Technologies. The property is Secret Governmental Center. The total property where the Governmental Center complex is 85 acres. And it's an institutional office district. So as I said, the applicant is requesting concept approval for a two-phase project. Phase one consists of a new sheriff's evidence storage building, which consists of a 20,611-square-foot building with associated park, parking and public infrastructure. Phase two consists of a two-story, 52,521-square-foot new sheriff's headquarters. Now, keep in mind that this phase two is just the pad site only. They're not intent on doing any construction other than the public infrastructure parking with phase one. Okay? So the proposed site is looking on, as I said, on the north side of the existing sheriff's building. The proposed new sheriff's evidence storage building is intended to store impound vehicles, evidence for investigations and cases conducted by the sheriff's department. Phase two is to provide a new sheriff's department headquarters facility with evidence and support staff. The proposed project is to be constructed, as I said, in two phases. Phase one is to construct the sheriff's evidence storage building, park it for both phases in phase one and two. This would include all public utilities, facilities to address all requires for water management, fencing and recovery of landscaping. During construction of phase one, the building pad for the headquarters site, phase two, would be completed. The headquarters building would need to obtain final planning commission approval in a separate approval process with the town planning commission. The proposed parking area of the entire site will consist of the following breakdown. The evidence building, phase one, private parking provided is 24 regular parking spots, two handicap parking spots and 133 impound parking spots. The sheriff's headquarters, phase two, would consist of 20 parking spots, two handicap and 214 private spots with eight handicap spaces. Per Chapter 155, 55, Chart V, the required parking spaces for this type of use is one per 300 square foot. Based on Chart B of said ordinance, the total building areas combined is 73,132 square foot. Therefore, the site is required to have 244 parking spots. The current proposed design exceeds the ordinance requirement by 159 parking spots. The proposed facility is to be used by mostly sheriff's department deputies and supporting staff and the police vehicles to support that staff. Per Chapter 155, 46D and E landscaping, the consultant has to meet these requirements by providing 61 candy trees, five 25 ornamental trees and 13 evergreens and 47 shrubs. Buffering and screen has been proposed between parking lots and adjoining uses and between institutional zone and residential zone. According to Leonard Town Ordinance, Chapter 155, 116, concept development plan requirement, the consultant has met the requirements. The consultant has obtained concept approval by St. Mary's County Soil Conservation District on May 20th, 2024, and St. Mary's County Department of Public Works and Transportation on October 31st, 2024. The Leonard Town Planning Department has reviewed the concept plans and approved the concept submission to be presented to the planning commission. The consultant will be required to investigate the proposed tie-in to the existing pump station to ensure the pump station can handle the additional project flows. Action needed today. The applicant is requesting concept approval for case number 3-24, sheriff's evidence storage building facility, 20,611-square-foot building with associated parking utilities. Phase two is the new sheriff's headquarters, which is 26,750-square-foot pad site. Okay? So the building is going to be two stories, so you would double that for square footy for parking lot calculations. Said property being part of St. Mary's County Governmental Center Complex, the planning and commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay or deny in a decision. And I have all the association with the attached with your badges. I have, because there's Debbie Dure, Gary Wimbley, you're from Public Works. And then I have the sheriff's, Steve, I didn't tell you last name. Is that her?
The Hall.
Yes. And then, I'm not exactly, if you have any questions. Park space is, so there's 244 required and then it exceeds it by 144. So over 400 park space.
And that's based on a need for that money or why so many?
So I can summarize that, two, really two elements. There's shift, shift work, and then also the impound requirements for the leaves, the vehicles that are in impound lots. So that's what's totally driven by.
So a lot of, so if you go over to the sheriff's department, a lot of times you'll see the police vehicles sitting up in the grass area there. So I imagine that some of those vehicles would be actually parked on.
Right, and they're also required to have a certain amount of vehicles that are spare capacity for operational requirements.
See, I have two questions. My first one is on, oh, sorry. Is on colors. Do you, I know this is just a rendering. I was wondering, do you, have you thought about what, how you're gonna make aesthetically what you're gonna do on the outside of your buildings?
Yeah, the color scheme is a, it's a rendering, it's a suggestion. And those are type of comments are, type of comments that we look to receive from Town Council and Planning Commission. We want to make sure that this reflects the same kind of architectural theme as the rest of the government center, but also has a little bit of uniqueness to itself. That was the thought.
Okay, so you're trying to add a little flair maybe at some point, which is always a good thing.
I would, personally, I love teal. It's one of my favorite colors. But this building is really nice looking. I think it would look great with black. That's my suggestion, black trim. It's not very wild, though. It's not very unique. And then my second question was, on the last statement on page that you just read, that Mike just read, it said, "Consultant will be required to investigate the proposed tie-in to existing pump station to ensure the pump station can handle additional projected flows." Can you tell us what that means?
So we still have to do the sewer and water connections as part of the site plan approval. And so we're, the consultant's under contract to finish that work. Do some test pitting to locate where the sewer mains are and then design the connection and the tie-ins. Right now, they're estimating for the phase one building, the evidence storage building, will require five EDUs. And for the headquarters building will require 50 EDUs. I don't have those calculations to actually review in any detail. That's what we're, that's what they're indicating, the sewer capacity requirements to be.
So they'll just make sure that everything is good for capacity.
So Laura, this is concept, so they don't have to have all that worked out at this point. It's still going to go through all the whole engineering and the architecturals and all that come back to you at final cycle.
Right, so that's referring to what's going down.
Right, so we will be meeting about how many EDUs they need. But there is an existing sewer pump station. And Mike was just pointing out that they need to make sure that that pump station can accommodate these new buildings. But that's all part of the engineering process and it'll be coming back one more time for final cycle.
Right, and if it can accommodate it, then something else.
They would have to either upgrade the pump station or throw another one or something.
Right, and the purpose is, is it quiet besides wanting to make sure we're taking the flow that's proposed to it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying, clarifying question on the, on the rendering? So you, I think you would think that the trim, instead of being that, that light, um...
Teal, teal. That's what I see. Something.
Okay, the teal, all right. So you think that that should be black and then that light, that light's dark.
Yeah, it can be anything.
Yeah, I think we don't have, we don't have that, so she's just saying a preference that she might have.
Right, our general opinion is, yeah. That is my opinion, so.
I guess it's really blended with the other buildings out there.
I'm a sheriff.
Madam vice chair, I would take it in any color I could.
Well, if teal's the only color you can get, I like teal, so I mean.
Teal or?
Very good.
Is the road from the parking lot, that, it looks like there's a, a road that's going to go near the old library? So that's one of the, the, there's only two ways in and out of this place, right?
That's correct. There'll be a connection to the parking lot for the Tuxit Building right there on Leonard Hall Drive. And then there'll be the back entrance, which comes off Washington Street, past the Board of Elections Building and into the back.
You currently store vehicles back there in the house, is that correct?
In, in that area, yes. And, and in the area where the headquarters building is going to be built, there's also some vehicle storage in there.
Look, the temporary trailer back there now, are they in storage or something?
We have two.
Two temporary?
Yeah, we, we were ahead of schedule. We beat the, we beat the county.
Okay.
Because we don't want to do anything to impede the process.
Okay, so, but those will go away?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there used to be some old break buildings that were back behind where the army is right now. And we demolished those in advance of construction. So we had replaced that storage with some trailers that are temporarily behind Tuxit Building.
The other part, I think this is just a, just because it's drawn this way, the actuals are quite abrupt. But this, this triangle piece this side here, is it, it's more of a, it's just kind of a boxy area that you guys were unable to acquire with the whole piece of land?
Actually, if, if you're talking about this section here, yeah, that, that's topography, really. It, it's kind of a ravine. And if anything, it's, it's going to be, we'll, we'll use that for stormwater management. So I think when, when we were drawing the boundary lines, the consultant, they were, they were, you know, they used basically a polygon feature on the GIS, didn't really have much, you know.
Gotcha.
Compared to the site development, just, that was just something key guys into where the site was.
Gotcha.
And I used GIS to do that. So it was kind of a, it's not a percentage of the limits of the systems for the project.
And then some of these, where the, where the new plants are going, they look like some sort of like border buffers. Is there, like on the northeast portion, it looks like a bunch of, it kind of looks like evergreens. I don't know if I see any reference to it. What's the reasoning behind planting like that? It's right by the parking lot?
I don't know if there's houses back there or something or?
There's a house, and I think there was a request to have a buffer. I mean, it's in our ordinance anyway.
Gotcha.
Residential, there's a box, you look at the front, there's probably another little box next to your house.
Gotcha, okay.
So to separate residential and, because this is institutional zoning, so you have to have a buffer. And then the landscaping plan, this is just kind of a concept. They will come back at final also if it's a detailed landscaping. They'll say what kind of trees and what kind of plants.
Right, so per the ordinance, you have to have buffering between the commercial residential piece of property. It also requires to have plantings within the parking lots to separate the parking areas. And so that's why you're seeing a few trees. But in the, you can't really tell here, if you go back to the stormwater management section, there's microbiotic retention facilities in between each one of those parks. And you can even see it right on the cover sheet. The parking islands, if you will, are actually fairly large, that have microbiotic retention facilities. If you go to C1.01, you can see a little, I don't know.
I see him, yep.
So those are the microbiotic retention facilities. They have necessarily designed, that's where, so there'll be plantings of all of those as well.
Gotcha.
And that's what you see on that hash sheet.
Thank you, sir. Is there, so those are kind of planned in right now, that particular spot I'm looking at? Because I know there's a residence there. Are we gonna run into where someone would come in and say, oh my gosh, this is happening right next to my house? And try to throw a fit? And then we tell them, well, we've got these plants planned? Because that's going to be significant for whoever lives back there. They've been living kind of back there for a long time. And then?
There is an existing tree line that you can see on that site map that are, so some of those trees are, they can't cross the property line.
Right, right.
So those would remain.
They have their own buffer kind of built in there.
That's correct. Now, there is a road that travels down right there along the property line. So I think that they would, might rather be excited about having additional trees there to buffer them.
Gotcha.
I, I, that's just a suggestion.
Were you asking about the trees or were you asking about the use?
Um, I was just kind of curious if, if, kind of like what happened when we were talking about that land over by LES? And there were a bunch of residents that came in and they were cranky, that it was happening right next to their house.
Well, yeah, that's gonna happen. I mean, the zoning is correct and they have a right to build this type of facility. And there are setbacks that they have to meet, which Mike has already verified that they have. So, I mean...
So I mean, you know, it's, you can't make everybody happy, but at the same time, they have met.
Right, well, it looks like they're planning to do some, something there that would kind of muffle that.
I believe there was a conversation with the next door owner. I don't, it's coming to my mind that there was something that he came about and so that's why there's some additional planting. I feel like there was something.
Gotcha. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Amazing.
Be ready for motion.
So I move to approve the request for concept site plan approval for case 324, evidence storage building facility, associated parking utilities, phase two, new sheriff's headquarters, pad site only located in the governmental center complex.
A second.
Oh, is this here, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. I want to have a few.
Um, Mike, the, on Camilla Drive where they're taking down a tree, what does that mean, a demo tree in CA? What's the CA mean?
Critical area.
Oh, okay.
And they did a planning agreement with the town to replace that actuarial, the chief's documents